Okay, welcome to this edition of the Amherst Planning Board Meeting. I'm Jonathan O'Keefe, the Vice Chair. Our Chair is not able to make it till a little bit later this evening, so I'll be running the initial portion of this meeting. As an announcement, as I always announce at the beginning of meetings, all public meetings in Massachusetts are subject to recording. This meeting is being recorded by ACTV and it's being broadcast live and will be rebroadcast on ACTV and is available for viewing online at amherstmedia.org. So if you don't get your fill tonight, you can come back and watch it later. The first item on our agenda is minutes from August 3rd. Any comments on the minutes?
Is my voice coming through the room speaker? Thank you. I will try to speak up. And as a reminder to folks who are asking questions or making comments in the audience, I will ask people to come up and use the microphone at the front of the room here. Even if we can hear you in the room, the mics don't pick up your voice unless you're sitting at the front table there and they can't hear you on TV. So, okay, back to the minutes, August 3rd. Comments on the minutes? Their motion?
I'll move to approve. Second.
Further discussion? All in favor of approving the minutes of August 3rd? Opposed? It's unanimous vote, thank you. Okay, the first item on our agenda, second item on our agenda, the first main item, is a public information session. We have here Steve Cecil, Ted Brovitz, and Josh Fiala from the Cecil Group. Thank you very much, folks, for coming out. The Planning Board has been working with the Cecil Group since late spring of this year on rezoning projects in both North Amherst and South Amherst. They've done a lot of tremendous work, and in the last couple of weeks, we've gotten the initial drafts of their recommended proposals for rezoning in both of those areas. So they have come in tonight to have what we're calling a public information session to talk about form-based zoning in general, because that's a new concept here in Amherst for most people, and also to talk about specifically the proposal that they've brought to us, the public process that led to the proposal, and some details about how the pieces fit together. So we're scheduled for about an hour to cover this tonight. Steve's got a presentation that he's told me will take about half an hour, so we'll hope to use about the first half hour for Steve to explain things to us, and then we'll have some space for questions and comments from the audience. We probably won't get a chance to hear from everyone if you all want to speak, because we do have a healthy crowd here tonight. So if you have questions or comments, I will ask you to keep them short and to the point, and not to focus too specifically on the details of the proposal, but to keep it more in the area of questions and general concepts about form-based code in general, to the extent that that's possible. This is just one step of the process. The Planning Board and the zoning Subcommittee will be continuing to discuss this in the future, and before this comes to town meeting, the Planning Board will be holding up actual public hearing, probably sometime in October, before this comes to town meeting, and that will be another opportunity for everyone to ask questions and participate. So again, if everybody doesn't get a chance to talk tonight, please come to our meetings going forward. We will be talking about this a lot more, and in particular, keep your eye out for the public hearing in October, once we have a final version of this. So with that, I will turn it over to Steve. Welcome, and thank you for coming out tonight. And again, if you want to stand up and walk around, you can take the mic out of the holder and just hold it in your hand, or...
Maybe what I will do is stand to the side a little bit. And speaking to the microphone, and we'll be referring to the slides that are on the screen, sort of in front of the members of the audience, but behind you a bit. What we're going to do, and perhaps if you could click the clicker there, or Josh, do you want to maybe sit up there and take care of that part of it? The agenda, we're going to talk quickly about the process to date in formulating specific zoning recommendations, and as part of that, we're going to back up and talk a little bit about the concept plans that have been developed through a series of workshops and meetings, building upon years' worth of master planning work at both the North Amherst Village Center and at Atkins Corner. We're going to discuss the nature of form-based zoning and some of the changes and the boundaries that would be associated with that, and then provide an overview of how form-based zoning might best apply to the goals as we've understood them for these two areas of Amherst. From there, we're going to talk a little bit about the implications of the form-based zoning, in terms that speak a little bit about what the changes are relative to the existing zoning that would occur in terms of the regulatory framework for land and parcels in these areas. We'll speak briefly about the next steps, but I think I actually will begin by anticipating that. This is the draft zoning. We've worked very hard to get all the pieces together, so that we can look at them and understand how they all work together, to take the input that you all provide and the community provides, to incorporate refinements that might be most helpful, so that the document that's put forward for review and approval is really thoroughly thought through. So today, we're going to give you a kind of a tour of the zoning, and how to enter into it, how to understand it, how to consider it as you look at it, because it's different from the kinds of zoning that is traditional and typical in Amherst and in most communities. Next slide. So the process to date, in which we've been engaged over the last series of months, included in evaluation of the existing conditions and the context, everything from uses to forms to traffic, circulation, regulatory trends, projects and proposals that emerged in past plans. We've taken a look at the land use and what trends exist relative to those uses, and all of the documents and reports are in our files, in our thoughts as we've moved forward. The public workshops that we've held, two memorable charrettes or workshops, one at North Amherst Village, and one down focused on Atkins Corner, helped us work with a number of the owners and stakeholders and citizens, community members, to understand what could best happen over time. And as we're going to talk about the concept plans, where you're headed long-term is fundamental to this kind of zoning. Then, what we've done is put together the complete first drafts of all the zoning amendments, and new article that is part of that, which will explain, Article 16, which will be in the zoning ordinance, or bylaw rather, which focuses on article, an article about form-based zoning. But there are changes in other portions of the zoning that addressed uses and process a little bit, and are linked to Article 16. So that's where we are today. In terms of the concept plans, taking a look at the North Amherst Village Center, we found that the approaches to and from the important crossroads that one thinks about as being the core of North Amherst Village, where the library is, and the historic church, and the great houses that line the streets, is a fairly identifiable location with a great deal of public ownership, and an idea that this should be, remain the civic center, with preserved approaches to and from the east, west, and south. But the notion that the green space, the river that runs through this part of town and through this district, is a place that helps create connections, open space connections, and potential future pathways as an amenity, and are transitioned into two different kinds of places. One, which is Montague Road, and Montague is a, has a kind of rural residential character that people easily identify, like, and wish to retain. Sunderland is much more of a commercial character, and many of the thoughts have focused on how to reinforce it as a good commercial corridor, with additional uses over time, modifying it so that it is not as oriented towards the large parking areas. And those two different roads or streets then define an area in between, which has a potential for development that complements the village types of uses around it. And that's the basic structure that we've sought to reinforce with the zoning recommendations. The Atkins Corner really picked up on the idea of Atkins Corner as a series of corners. It's very hard, other than the market, to think about where the center of this place is. In fact, it is and has always been a kind of a crossroads, and crossroads can be great places, too. So we felt that its transformation into a traditional village center was not so much what was going on, but really reinforcing the fact that each of the corners, as you enter, whether it be along west or along bay, into the area, have development that reflects those, kind of a village character, but leads you into areas off to the side, and a great deal of landscaping to articulate the edge, of course, of Hampshire College, which is here, and the major wetlands and pond, which is here. That's the overall notion of Atkins Corner, thinking about the views, the transitions, the roadways, and the parcels that collect at each one of the intersections. The existing Amherst, rather, North Amherst Village Center zoning is depicted and is largely illegible, even though I have corrected vision at this distance, and maybe it's worse at yours. But suffice it to say that the area that is outlined in red there is the area that we've been asked to study, to really consider, but that's not necessarily all of the area that needed to be included in terms of the village zoning. There is quite a collection of different zones that are in here, and I think that the commercial zone, which occupies a great deal of the land along Sunderland, is particularly important to note. There is also an historic district that we've taken into account, but as you'll see, we've walked through each one of the districts and tried to understand what the changes might be. This is the new outlines of the zoning areas that we're recommending in the draft document in front of you. There is a district which is kind of orange on that slide, which is called the North Amherst Village Center Form-Based District, or we decided to call it NAVC for short. It needs something to shorten that up. So it's the North Amherst Village Center zoning. And it is a zone that is, has a series of use, uses, and intensities of uses, and forms that come along with it. We recognized, however, that there were some notions about having the approaches to and from the village preserved, in terms of the look and feel and scale of those great single-family homes and old farmhouses, and the landscape and the streets along the way. So there is an overlay district of form, which says that if you are a fairly low-density residential area, or if you're within the historic district, along the approach roads to the village center, we want people to preserve the forms that are there, even if the uses change according to the existing zoning. Because the look and feel of how you get to and from a place is important, as well as getting there. So that's what that overlay zone is really intended to do, not change the zoning, but just make sure that the forms that occur over time, the shapes of the buildings and the sites are good. Next slide. So I think that if we subtract out this complexity of all the other zones, you can see, I think, a little bit better, the areas that we're talking about. There is a floodplain zone along the river's edge there that cuts right through the zone, and that is a significantly restricted zone because of the flooding considerations through there, so we're not looking to change that, which is why the zone kind of jumps across the river as well it should. Okay? So the existing zoning districts over in Atkins Corner comprise a combination of residential and business uses, a VC, Village Center district. Again, we're going to modify this. The area that we were looking at initially is the red outline. So here's what we're suggesting. There would be an Atkins Corner zoning district, the AC district for short, which is represented in that orange area. Now, it's different, it's a little bit different from the North Amherst district as well it should. These aren't too, there's some things that might be true of both places, but that's why it's its own district. The Village Center Residence District next door has been altered to bring the current uses, in effect, into compliance with certain density and open space requirements, and to provide for their future reasonable improvement, that portion of the district. That's kind of a cleanup that's coming along. And another cleanup, and obviously, I think, we think logical thing to do, is for Hampshire College to extend its future campus plans into an educational district. So what was zoned for residential uses at the southeast corner of Hampshire College would become a part of an ED district, which is a standard district that you have for your institutions of higher learning. One refinement that we thought about, however, was to make sure that the edges of that district are good neighbors, are compatible with the uses that will occur across the street. That's an important idea in planning, and an important idea we'll talk about in form-based zoning. In the existing zoning, there is, for educational zones like this, a requirement that the first 50 feet on the edges of an ED district conform to the dimensional standards of what's going across the street, for depth of 50 feet. Well, we're going to be changing the whole approach to dimensional standards with the form-based zoning, so we felt a need to be sort of explicit and say, what's good for the goose is good for the gander across the street, in terms of some of the basic dimensions. But that's not to suggest that there's anything other than educational uses, it's just thinking about how the street shapes up on the other side. And I think that's the, the other idea is just making sure with it, there's a portion of zoning, which again is a kind of a cleanup, which is along bay, to make sure that the low residents, low-density residents is what is there and is preserved in the future. So that's the Atkins Corner basic zoning outline. So part of the idea, and the radius that begins to look at this, is thinking about walking distances and how comfortable you can move from one location to the other. But this just focuses on where the zone changes are, and how, and how they would apply to the land itself, as I just described. So to express the new approach to form-based zoning, the suggestion has been to create a new article, Article 16, to have the form-based provisions for these zones within them. And that includes important statement of public purposes, and I'll explain in a second why that's so important. It goes through a notion that the streets, that the shaping of the streets, existing edges, and within the new developments that occur ought to have certain characteristics, sidewalks, trees, what kind of trees, how do curb cuts get handled, how do setbacks get handled? And again, there's a little bit of what's good for the goose is good for the gander. Some of this land is actually public right-of-way, this town land, and so it gives guidance to the future design, but is consistent with good traffic and circulation planning. It's just talking mostly about the scale of it, the aesthetics, and how do we make sure that bicycles and transit and trolleys and connections can occur in the future, and make sure that there's enough space, so that the private sector redevelopment and the public sector, the left hand and the right hand, know what's going on. Building types, talk about the kinds of forms that can occur, and how they fit on sites. Open space, thinking about the way that the green space ought to be developed, and then overall development standards that affect sites and buildings. We're thinking about non-conforming lots. What happens if I'm no longer conforming, I don't conform with the existing zoning or future zoning? Can I do something with my property? Well, the answer is yes, if you're headed in directions that support the overall public goals. So we've described that. We've looked at off-street parking access standards, and just very briefly, the approach provides more flexibility in creating good parking solutions, to reduce the amount of unnecessary asphalt over time, landscape screening, and then administration. And the overall goals and policies of the plan really grow from the master plan, and they're listed here, but it's really trying to put all of the pieces together in a cohesive way. I'm going to mention an important idea upfront, and we're going to return to it towards the end of the slideshow, though, is that one of the concerns and one of the dangers of form-based zoning is thinking that you can predict all of the good ideas that could possibly happen, and create boxes for everything that could occur, that will solve all of the problems and create, and meet the public goals. The answer, in reality, though, is that there could be great ideas or great kinds of proposals that meet the public purposes, but differently than the forms or the particular shapes that we see. In traditional zoning, you have, if you want to vary from what the zoning has, you have a series of choices and potential, depending upon the nature of that variation. There's, there are processes where you can go through a zone change, there are processes where you can get a variance, if it's justified, through the zoning board of appeals. What we're suggesting is that for form-based zoning, if someone comes up with a better idea, and both the Planning Board, the Permit Granting Agency, the Planning Board, and the proponent agree that it's a better idea and it fits the purposes, you can move ahead with that. So the idea is that if something can be better, and everybody agrees on it, go ahead, but it establishes a bar or a standard that at the minimum, all different projects would have to meet, you see? So there's a kind of a flexibility built into the process. But from there, the kind of standards and approaches that we're looking for are expressed in the next few slides. In terms of street types, there are, at this point, four different street types that we are suggesting are important. So for example, Sunderland, if you look at the zoning, or the west and bay down in Atkins Corner, would be considered commercial street types, and they're intended to provide landscaping along the edges, with potential places for landscaping, providing relatively narrow car widths and no great shoulders, these are not intended to be highways as they come into and out of the village centers. There are setbacks, and the majority of the parking is intended to be tucked between, or even better yet, behind the buildings that line the edge. There's a recognition that the intensity of use won't likely be storefronts and buildings and multiple-use buildings lined all the way along, but it's to really remove that pattern of large asphalt areas with buildings way in the back. Is this the same slide? Village residential?
Previous one was civic, commercial?
I'm sorry, civic, commercial. I'm sorry. The civic commercial was focused on areas that include the civic core itself, if I got that correct? Okay. And you'll see that there are a lot of similarities between them, and there's sort of a phase. As we move towards the commercial type, it's pretty similar overall. We get into the village residential street type, so for example, when we're taking a look at Montague, these are the streets that we expect to see bicycle lanes being introduced, and where the parking really should be behind and out of the way of the frontage, if you really think about it. It's really not a commercial street, it's much more of a residential character in terms of a street. Next slide. Now, one of the things that will happen over time is that parcels of land will be developed that are not on west, or on bay, or on Montague, or on Sunderland. There are these large parcels that are either back behind or inside of those areas, so there will be new access roads or access streets to get to and from those areas. So the thought is to, again, on those access roads, is to create a continuous edge of buildings, rather than parking, and a significant amount of landscape, so that as you're making those connections to and from newly-developed areas, it's not a curb cut and a parking lot. They're real pleasant streets to get you in and through, so as new streets get, that new layer of streets gets added, they would be more like this. Each one of these, by the way, again, in terms of guide to how to enter into this process, is you'll find their design characteristics for each one of these that specify, well, what would a typical width be, and what are sidewalks, and how does that all work? There are going to be multiple-use paths that could take joggers, people walking dogs, bicyclists, that are really intended to be important connections that link different areas. So we have some standards for those kinds of links, which aren't about cars, they're about people and bicyclists, and pets. Now, having established that hierarchy, the different types of roads, one of the things that then you need to take a look at is, well, how do the buildings and projects get shaped over time, in a way? And so there are a series of different building types, and they are linked to images of precedents that exist here or other places, that might very well be approved under these circumstances. So they're building types that, for example, are civic types, and we were thinking about the kinds of buildings that emerged over in North Amherst, for example, where the library really needs a landscape of some sort in front of it. It would be a lot that doesn't have parking in front of it if it was around the back. And it's great if those kinds of buildings come close to the street and really address them. There are commercial buildings and types that exist, and there's a general tendency to try to locate buildings along streets and to conceal the parking back behind them, to the greatest degree practical, and provide some variation in the frontage and the facades and the scale, as they get developed over time. Next slide. In terms of mixed-use buildings, we expect that there will be buildings that may have retail on the ground floor, or a small office up above, or housing, and looking at what the overall scale of those, one of the things that you should understand is that there's no increases in heights being proposed in any of these, relative to what the existing heights are. But it's still important how you shape buildings, and how long the facades are, and how those relationships work over time. So multifamily residential types, or mixed-use building types, we have some suggestions about how those can get masked, to remind us of the traditional building types and characteristics that make Amherst such a great place. It talks about residential building types specifically, and raises the opportunity for live-work space that might have a storefront, or a door you walk into, and there's a shop on the lower level, and a place to work up above. And many people mentioned how desirable that is, is a kind of a type of live-work arrangement over time, and the buildings can and should reflect that. Now, one of the things that we have talked a little bit about is the kinds of open space which occur. You are going to develop civic open spaces that are publicly owned, undoubtedly, but also development, the projects coming forward, will need to provide open space that is part of their development. You have requirements about that. So there's sense of spacing and character and qualities that will enhance the district as a whole, and be responsive to the size and types of buildings, simply enough said. There are special standards in here about development standards for sites and buildings when you put all of this together. So for example, there are standards that, think about Atkins Corner, and that's what the sketch in the lower side talks about, the idea that maybe in some cases, you don't bring buildings to the corner, but have some open space, create parking behind, and a kind of connection that allows you to wind your way through them. That would be a really good solution, for example. Next slide. The article also then talks about the notion of non-conforming lots, uses, and structures. So for example, if you have a commercial building, and it's along Sunderland, and someone says, gee, I'd like to add to it, how do I do that? Because some of the setback requirements that are there, or even exist today- Because some of the setback requirements that are there or even exist today wouldn't allow me to do that. We want to make sure people reinvest in their properties and provide opportunities, but we show where we would like to have you add to those buildings. And generally, we'd like to see the buildings march forward, move the parking around the sides and the back, create more landscaping in front, but provide that opportunity to actually add and reinvest in properties without having it sit exactly the way it is over a long period of time. So some of the diagrams speak to those opportunities. I've mentioned the off-street parking standards, and there are new options for reducing the parking requirements on a case-by-case basis if the proponent can demonstrate the fact that by sharing spaces, there's a win-win, less asphalt and fewer needs for parking spaces, as long as the parking is actually accommodated as it's needed. There are some parking lot design standards. And then, again, in the landscaping, screening, and lighting standards, just good practice. I think it's very important, and there's a lot of focus here, on landscaping, I think for good reason. When you have village centers, the character of the landscape itself becomes an important part of the overall environment. And these are just good, good, good design ideas. And then, under the administration, I've already stressed this point, it talks about the way that proponents would come to the table. A few key ideas here. Form-based zoning provides models of what are presumed to be good development that meet the public goals, and the idea is not to make life more complicated and approvals longer, but having thought through all of this, that a proponent who matches the guidelines and standards can move to go. You've met the purposes. And so while they may be very specific in some cases, they should simplify things in the future. We've tried to be very thoughtful about what's feasible and reasonable and matching the public interests. But this business of a method for alternative appliance, a good idea coming to the table, it's a variation that nobody really kind of thought through before, if everybody's agreement, keep going, but, 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 it has to conform with the public purposes. So when you review the zoning, look carefully. It's less important, perhaps, in other forms of zoning, but why are you doing this and why you are trying to make sure you have solid village centers is really part of what this is about. So, sorry for being quite so long, and that's a kind of a higher-level view. Quickly, we thought, Ted, if you want to touch upon, how are we doing on terms of time? Okay? All right, so Ted, I think if you could walk through a little bit the existing zoning districts and a few of the high points in terms of the changes that are associated with this. Could you do that?
Okay, we're in North Amherst Village Center, and the red area is the commercial district. And what we've done in putting together this new zoning district is accumulate several existing districts, and primarily in North Amherst, we're talking about the commercial district, the village, the business village center district. And you can't see this table, obviously, but basically, by and large, all the uses that are permitted in the commercial district are going to be allowed in the North Amherst Village Center district. There are some specifics in terms of the location of uses. So, for example, while in the new village center district, you can do mixed use, you can have residential as well as commercial and other uses, there are specifics in terms of the placement. So on Sunderland Road, for example, we want you, in the first hundred feet, to either have your residents above the commercial storefronts or beyond, or back, so that we can preserve the commercial opportunity, potential that the residents told us exist and that they want to fill in over time to meet local needs in the area and the neighborhoods around it. In terms of the business village center, all of the uses that are allowed today in that core area around the intersection, Pine Street and North Pleasant Street, are allowed in the district, the new district as well. In terms of dimensional standards, that's really where the changes occur greatly. There are a series of basic minimum lot sizes, setbacks, height restrictions, and the key changes there are, for example, the setbacks. One of the key objectives of any form-based code is to try to create a better relationship between the buildings and the lots and the streets. So we've created a minimum as well as a maximum setback, the minimum being five feet off the right-of-way, the maximum being 20 feet off the right-of-way, so that we create more of a relationship, we create some enclosure, and in effect, basically, we are bolstering the traditional village center development pattern. As Steve mentioned, the heights basically stay the same, three stories, 40 feet throughout the new district. The minimum setbacks on the side and to the rear have been varied, again, following more of the forms for the individual types of buildings and lots, rather than a, sort of an arbitrary, you know, five or 10 or 15 feet. Again, it really, what's really important here is the forms themselves and how the buildings are placed on the lots and how they relate to the street and to other buildings that are nearby. Atkins Corner, basically, we're working with two main districts, where Atkins Farm Markets is today is the Business Limited District, and then that corridor along West Street, north and south of the intersection, as well as partially up Bay Road and West Bay Road is in the R.O. District. That would be incorporated into the new Atkins Corner District. And again, it's cumulative, so that all of the uses primarily allowed in the Business Limited District, as well as in the R.O. District, with some exceptions, would be allowed in the new Village Center District. One key change is that we're trying to, again, bolster higher-density mixed use in this very small area. So we're trying to facilitate more mixed use and different forms of residential. In the R.O. District, it's very restrictive in terms of the types of residential uses, primarily single-family and two-family housing. We have expanded that now to allow more townhouse-type development, multifamily, certain types of multifamilies, so that, again, we build up that district. And again, one of the keys in trying to create this village center is to make connections and create relationships. So with the streets that are designed for that area, we're trying to reach out to Hampshire College, we're trying to reach out to Hampshire Village, Applewood, and so on. So in terms of dimensions, again, the focus now becomes not so much on minimum lot sizes, minimum setbacks, but the actual forms of different types of civic, commercial, mixed use, and residential developments.
So we're appreciating the comments that we are getting, will get. The information is posted, and it's going to be posted on the website, and we will be preparing then a second draft responding to the various considerations that come forward. There's a public hearing coming up in early October, and probably continuation of that on October 15th, 19th, rather, and then November 7th, we're trying to get prepared to get to town meeting. We've worked very hard to try to make sure that each one of the aspects of the zoning is consistent with these years and years of planning, but we recognize the fact that refinements will be needed, and we look forward to any comments or questions that you have this evening.
Thank you, Steve. So I'm going to turn first to my colleagues on the board to see if anyone has questions or comments, and just ask folks to bear in mind that we do have a limited amount of time, so not to go into too much depth and detail, because I do want to make sure we have a chance to hear from the public also. So anyone have any comments, feedback, or questions? Richard?
Thanks, Jonathan. First of all, thanks for your good work on this project. It's a lot of good info. I made these comments at the zoning subcommittee meeting that preceded this meeting, but you weren't here, obviously, and I think you need to hear them also. Regarding transportation, and I think you've heard some of my comments at an earlier charrette in North Amherst, the identification of pedestrian and bicycle options is very good, but we need some information in here, basically advocating an elevation for identifying public transport options. And you've identified the four street types, and you've identified parking, off-street parking in other areas. And I understand there's language in your present, in the proposal for addressing changes as future options arise and needs arise. And I understand the street types are models and just representative variations on things that might occur, and that those might change. But we need some language in this that addresses the fact that public transport needs to be a component of the current plan, not an option for the future. So to the extent that, for example, a dedicated bus lane might be identified in a couple of those street types, or other types of public transport options, bus pull-offs, or turnarounds, or whatever it might be, they need to be identified in this, I believe. I'll keep my comments here succinct, and you can talk with staff, who I think have more detailed information about what I was suggesting, but I think that's the crux of my comments. I appreciate the fact that you've allowed for options for this, but we need more than options. We need identification of current existing conditions to accommodate public transport.
Thank you, Richard. Any other comments? Rob?
Could you explain a little bit of footnote O on table three? Could you give us a little more detailed explanation about footnote O on the dimensional table, table three? Specifically, I want to know, I just want an explanation of how these lot frontages were arrived at, and the percentage frontage that you're recommending in the open space. Where do those come from?
Basically, what we did was look at either the existing underlying, or the existing zone, or the most applicable similar zone, and use the same standards. The theory being that we're not really changing the basic building blocks, making sure, for example, that future lots have frontage, they have access on a street, that there's a minimum width for those sorts of uses. So the idea was simply not to change the building blocks in your zoning that are already there and appear to work. Then, when you get back in the form-based portion of it, it has refinements of what happens in that frontage. So we used your zoning as your own model to do that. We do think it's important, the one thing we had quite a bit of discussion about was the notion of frontage. You were going to have, some large parcels will develop over time. In both of these areas, there's some pretty large parcels that will either be subdivided, or they may be developed, and this is a different pattern from the past, with multiple buildings and multiple uses on the same lot. That can be a pretty good thing. But what we wanted to avoid was a kind of a segmentation that occurs where projects would exist floating in parking lots over time. So the overall, if you look at the frontage requirements, the lotting requirements, and how it relates to the form-based zoning, places should have a front door along an accessible road with sidewalks and ways to get to and from. That, we felt, was a very important idea of what a village is, as opposed to different kinds of development. So using, to answer your question again, the model for those standards is right within your own zoning. We're trying to change that as least amount possible.
Okay. If no one has anything else, I will turn to the public. And again, I will reiterate that we only have one mic, Steve, so I'll ask you to relinquish the mic when you're called upon. If you could either come up to the front table, or if you get the mic handed back to you, and please begin by identifying yourself, the gentleman to your left there, Steve.
Good evening. My name is James Steinberg. I am a resident of Montague Road. And Mr. Cecil, I wanted to thank you for the charrette that you organized. My neighbors and myself were very grateful to be able to come and voice our interest and concerns. And what you took from that meeting, you mentioned at the beginning of your talk, which was that Sunderland Road would remain commercial and Montague Road would remain residential. And in fact, I think I saw a drawing after the charrette that clearly showed that that was the zoning that we were going to continue with. But when I'm looking at this map here, and actually, my wife, at the last meeting, she came back with some disturbing news, that that was changing, and I'm wondering if the Jones people and the Puffer people are having some undue influence. Right here, this is now part of the commercial zoning?
Right. Well, it's part of the form-based zone, the new form-based zone.
Okay, which is kind of a euphemism for commercial, it seems. I mean, this right here destroys the residential character of Montague Road, which is something that you took from the residents of Montague Road at that meeting, am I correct? That was loud and clear.
Well, if I can respond. We heard, we heard many different voices, and what we took from that, for example, the corner at, up by Cowles and Summer Street, have the offices of the Coles operation is partly in there today. It's not a residential use, alone, but it was in a residential-shaped building. But the idea is, in fact, I got that correct, but I guess not quite. Oh, I'm sorry. Instead of both, but the point, I guess the point is, as we were talking about it, we understand that it's part of what is today a commercial operation, and what is in the zoning, for your opinion, review, and consideration, is the notion that there might be other kinds of uses, at least in several locations along there, if it were approved, but that the form that it would take would be in buildings shaped exactly like the large old farmhouses and the old townhouses. The idea was, it doesn't matter so much what's inside the building, as the look and feel, the landscape, and the other characteristics in a few places, that might make sense. So that's what the zoning suggests. So, and that's what form-based zoning can do. It's not like the old-fashioned zoning so much, which says, this is the limit of the uses in one area, the limits of the use in the other areas. It represents that those things can be mixed a little bit, but that the shape of it, the look and feel of it, is really, really important. So one could not develop a commercial shopping center along that edge. It would have to have the same look and feel to represent the character of Montague, and Montague is represented as that kind of rural residential, I'm sorry, residential-oriented village street. So that's the, that's the approach that we have taken in listening to the many different points of view, but it's a draft for your comments. So who should I hand it to next?
Thank you.
Valerie Cooley, also a resident of Montague Road. And I guess I just want to point out that we appreciate very much that you want to keep it looking like farmhouse and residential, but those of us who live there, okay, because these little carved-out properties that would become, particularly on the east side of Montague, okay, that's between the river and the park, okay, that is currently residential, it's one house and a bunch of yard. I don't know, it's a weird property that's on the inside there of, between Sunderland and Montague. It's currently a house, it's currently residential, perhaps it's zoned for more than that, I don't know, but it's currently, all of it residential, except for the Coles, which is true. There's an office downstairs, yes, there's an office downstairs, and people live upstairs. Looks beautiful, right? So we appreciate that you are concerned about what it looks like. We are also concerned about what's inside the buildings, okay? One of our primary concerns is traffic and safety, okay? There's families who live in that neighborhood. It's a residential neighborhood, and we want to make sure that's protected. And if there's, you just said they couldn't put up a commercial, but what he said earlier is that everything that you can do currently in the commercial and in the business center could happen in those, those could happen in those new properties, which means as long as it looks pretty, it could be a shopping mall, which means lots more traffic, lots more cars, lots more noise, okay? So I just want to make the point that we appreciate the form-based, but we are concerned about use as well, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. In the back.
Hi, Elaine Frandhoffer. And I had a quick question about, you covered access street type as part of the form-based zoning, and how does that incorporate bicycle use, pedestrian use? Can you explain how that gets worked into this new zoning plan?
Sorry, can you see, I'm particularly concerned about that South Amherst area was heavy traffic area at heart, the access and a lot of this.
The South Amherst, the Atkins Corner and how that works. Well, the access road doesn't specifically have separate bicycle lanes on it, as I recall. The sidewalks would be required, set back from the road, that would thread their way through it. So the thought there was that bicycling would be on, they'd be smaller local streets. That's what that, the current version of the access road has. We don't know how long they will be, where they will go. But the idea of where the bicycle lanes are, it's really tried to be linking up with where the bicycle lane improvements over time within the town, the overall town plan, to create those larger-scale connections moving between places, that we continue that pattern and bring people to the centers. But then, once you're in the center, either you can take advantage of a shared path, if there's a shared path, a shared path being a kind of a connection that is really part of connecting open space in other places, or you'd be either on the street or on the sidewalk in those internal roads. So that's what the proposal has.
You talked about the bicycles are, the pedestrian.
And pedestrian, they would have pedestrian, those access roads have sidewalks, both sides right into the new development areas.
Crossings though, like?
Crossings and crosswalks and the whole kit and caboodle. It's meant to be a pedestrian. I think one of the very, very important notions all along has been that the village centers, and it really need to be pedestrian-oriented places. That means really good places for pedestrians to move around, to the front doors of all of the different components of what's in there. In that then sidewalks lead to those walkways and the sidewalks lead to the corners and you can move around. So that becomes a standard. In some cases, that may actually be constructed by the town as part of street improvements. In other cases, it might be constructed by a developer to town standards. Jonathan?
Actually, at Atkins Corners, the only access street that is anticipated is the extension of the, what you've already seen probably as the built, the new roadways that go around Atkins Farm Market. There is planned to be an extension of that further west to connect to Rambling Road, and that might be the only one of those that qualified as an access street. The other existing streets would be developed as commercial streets under this because they're going to be public ways. They're not going to be private.
How about pedestrians' crossings, like between Applewood and?
Same thing. There are provisions in this and that the town would follow in any event to assure that there were accessible, appropriately connected crosswalks at every intersection where there was going to be a pedestrian connection.
So, for example, that's one of the reasons why we were thinking that having some form-based ideas about pedestrian access across the Hampshire College side would really make sense over time. Of course, Hampshire College will want its students and faculty and staff moving back and forth in a comfortable and safe manner as well. But it's just making sure that as development occurs, incrementally, you're building those links so that you end up with a really great pedestrian environment. Every time someone moves, it's creating that next step in the pedestrian places. I'm using the next step, that's the right image for pedestrian systems. So.
Ma'am, on my right-hand side there, yes, with your hand up.
My name is Nina Mankin and I live on Summer Street, so down the street from here in North Amherst. And my question has to do with if there's any provision within this concept of form-based zoning that actually does address interior space, which is related to your question, although my concern is more related, not so much, well, I'm concerned about the commercial space, I'm more concerned about the residential space and how, if there's any provision within this, to actually look at how students use space because, and I personally have no problem with students renting space. I will tell you that I live next to a house that has, is a two-family house with three bedrooms on either side, and there are six students generally who live in that house, and the problems are astonishing. And that, to my mind, is not about the six students who live in that house, it's about the structure of the interior of those spaces. And that when you design residential space that's about fitting as many people as you can into a small amount of space, it is conducive to a certain kind of lifestyle and that that is problematic in terms of the quality of life of a community. And my question is, has there been any provision in looking at what the residential component of this is that looks at the way that young people live to think about how this space is going to be used?
I apologize for insulting with my colleagues because this is a really good question. I want to make sure I get the right answer to it. Zoning typically, when we talk about the inside of buildings, zoning itself doesn't deal with the interior design layout. The issue is housing choice and housing variety in a community that has been overwhelmed in some districts, many areas with student housing. And zoning can't address who lives in the housing in that manner. It can't do it that way. But one of the principles that we're pursuing and that is something we're going to go back and take a little bit more of, in the form-based approach to things and also in the use tables, part of the intention was to make sure that there would be a mixture of unit types, okay, within a development, so it's not all uniform. And you can do that by varying bedroom counts, for example, or even just buildings that have some smaller units and larger units. You can't guarantee that you won't have a uniform population, so to speak, that comes along. But what we heard was that people like having a variety of housing choices and an ability to handle households and families of all types and all sizes within what a village center is. So you can create some variety, but beyond that, there's not too much that we can do to formulate specific requirements in zoning.
Yeah, I'm thinking, which is, my question is really about whether the specific population that is really a population that needs housing here? Can everybody? I think everyone. Um, sorry. My question is specifically about that, conceptually, having an area that has different varieties of housing, conceptually should bring in different kinds of people to live in them. Within our community, there's a particular population that needs housing, and that's something, it's a need that is positive for our community to address, but that is disproportionately the need for housing is among undergraduate students, and that is disproportionately the people who are going to be looking to rent these units. Has there been, rather than conceptually saying, if we build two bedrooms, three bedrooms and one bedrooms, we're going to get a family here, we're going to get an older person here, we're going to get a couple here, and in this three-bedroom, maybe we'll get three students. That would be great if we lived in a community where that was the population that was going to be renting those units. In fact, we disproportionately have undergraduate students who will be renting these units. So has there been a study done that's specifically about how to address that need in a positive way?
We have studied this in a number of circumstances in communities, and the answer appears from a legal, as well as practical matter, that zoning, zoning, which is what we're talking about tonight, cannot address that particular consideration. Zoning is not the tool to address that. It needs to be open to the range of populations that might like to rent or buy over time. That zoning is not the tool to answer that, unfortunately. I know it's an important consideration for the town.
And so just to follow up on that, that's obviously a concern that is expressed very often in many different discussions about things all over town. And Steve's right, that it's not something that zoning can specifically address, either in this project or really through any aspect of zoning in terms of who can live there. But the town is very, the town is very well aware of the types of issues that you're describing, and there are various efforts underway to regulate and control that better, more through a behavior-based approach in terms of controlling the behaviors. But that really transcends what we can do through zoning. So in the specific realm of what we're talking about here, I'm not sure we can directly address the issues that you're raising, but there are efforts underway to deal with that in other ways also. So I don't want to dig too deeply into that because other people have comments also. Jonathan, if you could just quickly.
I would just ask that if you want to talk about that after the meeting, I'll be available. I can tell you some of what the town and others are doing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Hi, I'm Paula DiStefano, 115 Montague Road. And I'd just like to say that when we had the charrette for North Amherst, a lot of what we talked about was the problems that we face in this area with traffic flow. And looking at these maps and seeing that there's this planned area for high-density business, apartments, residential, I don't know how you can allocate all this area to those uses without dealing with the traffic issues. And I think one of the issues with student housing, none of us really has anything against students, but I live across from a rental house and there are often, you know, 10 cars in the driveways as opposed to maybe two if it were a family. So the higher car flow and traffic flow with students, in addition to the kind of traffic that would come in because of business use, is a real concern, I think, for the residents in that area. And I don't feel like that's been addressed in anything that you've talked about.
Well, as part of our evaluation of the existing conditions, we looked at the roadways and typical roadway capacities. And we've also taken into account the, you know, the existing zoning and the future zoning. And overall, the quantity of uses that could occur in the future is very similar to what it would be today. That was a really important check for us. And under the build-out scenarios, we say build-out, what happens if everybody creates these village improvements over time? The, there appears to be adequate capacity from a roadway design standpoint. There will be more cars on those roads, but there's adequate capacity for the new development that's being suggested. The roads have a reasonable amount of capacity. So we've checked it. However, I will say that over time, the ability of the roadway system to carry development or large developments and the environmental notification and environmental impact review process, if a project provides more than a 10% increase in the roadways, they have to go through an environmental impact review process to demonstrate that there's adequate room in advance or improvements to create it. But we think that the land development balances against the amount of roadway capacity that's there today.
Steve, is it also worth pointing out that the street types, as you've outlined them in your report, particularly the types that would be in the village center, serve the purpose of restricting traffic flow and sort of decreasing the demand for high-speed traffic moving through an area by on-street parking, pedestrian bumpouts and things like that, serves to almost direct traffic away from the area in certain ways and make the streets more friendly to pedestrians and bicyclists?
Very deliberately, to calm traffic, to slow it down. These are village centers, not highways. I think also the notion that there will be new access roads and connecting roads that need to occur are important. I thought you were going to actually say something else that I forgot to mention, but I'll go ahead and mention it as well, is that there are certain roadway or street improvements that were mentioned in the workshops that seemed a very good idea to us. It's hard to get roadway improvements through zoning, but it's important that we communicate that. So part of our final product is communicating some thoughts about how things can be improved. And in North Amherst particularly, the way that Montague and Sunderland come together is pretty amazing. And we think that there's a better way to do it. There are probably several different better ways to do it, but we're going to bring that, again, to people's attention because I think that could improve a lot of conditions, particularly along Montague, when Sunderland is more of a commercial street as it is, to slow things down, calm things down, and see if a little bit of that can be diverted away. But, so that isn't being lost in the process, I want to underline that.
Thank you. That's the first time I've ever heard anyone refer to that intersection as "amazing." Yes, ma'am, on the aisle. Sorry, go ahead. I was actually trying to call on Ms. Barbara in the back, who had her hand up.
Denise Barverett. I actually live at 67 North Whitney Street, but, which is near the center of Amherst, but I do pass through North Amherst regularly now on my commute to Greenfield. I think this is a very interesting document that has been presented to us. It is very long, it is very complex, it is very dense, perhaps meaty or chewy. And I guess I look forward to reading it and digesting it in the, I believe it's two months we have before town meeting, because since I am a town meeting member, I will be musing on it, at least. When does town meeting begin?
November 7th.
November 7th, so we have exactly two months. Which brings me to a couple of questions about dates and timing. It's my understanding that this article needs, whatever article it is going to be, that is, it's going to be submitted to Town Hall on, what month is it, September 26th to go on to the warrant? Is that the deadline to submit it?
Tucker?
The deadline for the submission of language is September 26th. I believe the deadline for the Select Board signing of the warrant is later. It's either October 7th or the October 10th, and there's time within there to make adjustments in the language prior to the signing of the warrant by the Select Board. Once the Select Board signs the warrant, the language is frozen in terms of its scope and subsequent changes, whether made in the motion by the Planning Board or in amendments from the floor, have to be within the scope of what is in that language once the warrant is signed.
Okay, so that means that the board has exactly one month to look through what they have here and make modifications and changes and so on and so forth. Doesn't seem like a long amount of time, so I guess my question is, what types of, my first question is, what types of modifications is the board thinking of making to this particular article before they submit it to Town Hall and before it is signed?
I'll answer that by saying, pretty much all types of modifications are on the table. I mean, we have a draft article that the Cecil Group has presented to us. We've talked about it at a couple of meetings. We will continue to talk about it at our meetings going forward. And it's a warrant article, like any other warrant article, so we could change any aspect of it.
So the second question I have is that the changes that the public suggests are going to be first broached on October 5th, which would be two days before the language becomes frozen in time by the signing of the warrant by the Select Board. Is this true?
The public hearing that the Planning Board will have is on the date that you said, yes?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
Yes.
Okay, so the public will have two days. So this means, well, the public has now under one month to go through this and begin to think about it, digest it, look at the types of changes. Now, what happens if the public is interested in seeing substantial changes, substantial modifications after the language is essentially frozen in time? Considering the length and the complexity of the document and perhaps the strength of feeling, particularly among those people who are town members and who live in, sorry, town meeting members and who live in North Amherst, what is it going to look like when this article finally gets to the floor of town meeting? like when this article finally gets to the floor of Town Meeting?
What is it going to look like? I guess I don't really understand the question.
Well, what ki- I am, I guess I am concerned that we are going to end up on the floor of Town Meeting with pages and pages and pages of modifications to be brought to this particular article.
So, I'm not quite sure how to address that.
Okay, well, let me sum it up.
We will very likely be making changes between now and when the warrant article language is finalized. At that point, as Mr. Tucker pointed out, any future changes, once the warrant article language is finalized, need to be within the scope of the article and thus cannot enlarge its scope in any sense. So, there cannot be any substantive changes that enlarge the scope of the article after the warrant is signed.
And to follow up, do you believe it is fair to, in some way, kind of stunt public participation, which, because the public only has a couple of days to weigh in on these changes before the language is frozen time, do you believe that that is a sufficient amount of time for the public to have to suggest things that they might wish to happen with this article?
I would suggest that the public process started several months ago and has been continuing through the course of the late spring, all through the summer. It continues this evening. It will continue over the next several weeks. Every one of our meetings is open to the public, and almost all of them are televised on ACTV. We've heard plenty of feedback. We will be hearing more feedback. We're hearing more feedback tonight. So, I guess I don't agree with your characterization of two days' worth of public comment as being the extent of the public participation in this.
No, no, no.
So, thank you, Ms. Barbara. I do appreciate your comments about the timeframe.
Yeah, that's, that's not what I'm saying, though. I'm saying public comment on this particular document. Certainly, there has been much public participation, but you need to see what the language is for the zoning article that goes to Town Meeting before you can make your comments on it.
Indeed. Thank you. Ms. Brastrow?
I just wanted to point out that the zoning Subcommittee has been- I wanted to point out that the zoning Subcommittee has been studying this document and will continue to study it. And the zoning Subcommittee will be meeting next week, and they will also be meeting on the 21st of September. And they may meet in the interim between the 21st of September and August 5th. So, people are invited to come to the zoning Subcommittee, which meets at 5:00 before Planning Board meetings and on most Wednesdays, to engage in conversation with the zoning Subcommittee about this article.
I would also note that the version that is before us this evening, which is first being presented as an entirety, is on the web, Town website. And Town Planning Department would be delighted to receive any and all comments, questions, concerns about that. People can read it and see what happens. If the online version is not accessible to you, we will make copies available at the libraries, and you're welcome to come into the Planning Department and receive a hard copy to read yourselves.
Okay. So, we're going to try to wrap this up in the next five or 10 minutes. We're already a little bit over our time, but I have seen a couple of hands, one on the right and one on the left, that I'll try to get to before we finish. So, ma'am, in the back?
My name is Claire Bertrand. I live on Bay Road. And so, I didn't get to attend the charrette, and I just am so thrilled to see the result of my neighbors and what they came up with, because I have lived and worked in the other Village Center in South Amherst. And boy, do I wish we had form-based code. Because the zoning in place now, you know, is very complex. Town Meeting struggles with it every time, any zoning. I think this, and I hate to be contrarian to our previous speaker, but is simple. It's straightforward. It lays out how things should be, how welcoming our centers and communal areas should be. I live and work in an area where it's hard to cross the street, and I want to go get a coffee or a newspaper. So, I'd like to see my area improved, but it's going to take time. I'd love to see the form-based code come there. I think, like where I am, we've built a campus almost because we need it to be safe and comfortable and walkable and bikeable. And everybody in the area comes, walks their dogs there and everything. It's a mixed use, and that's exactly what we need. We need people to understand, everybody here agreed, you know, the community has agreed through the master plan what we want. We love our town. We want it to remain a vital New England community. And this is what I'm seeing described, you know, particularly, my interest is South Amherst, but on how, when you come in, you slow down because you see people and you see businesses, and you can read the sign. You don't have to make the sign big because you're actually kind of close to it, and you're actually going slow enough to read it. I love all that. So, I just want to applaud what I see here. And I do think, I know this is going to be hard for Town Meeting, because it's a tough concept, but I think ultimately, when you shave it down, it's actually quite straightforward and simple. And it's not hugely different, the use, I hear that concern, but the use, I'm not hearing that we're changing the use. We're changing what's the form of it, so then the use has to, the use will have to change, because you can't do certain things. Yeah, I mean, anytime you manage property, and you just can't, if you keep it constricted, that's, anyway, so I just really like this, and I appreciate your effort to present it.
Thank you. Last one in the front, Mr. Greenbaum.
Louis Greenbaum, Precinct 1. I have nothing but the greatest admiration for Mr. Cecil and his colleagues. They've done superb work. And I sit here highly admiring of their illustrations, their maps, their proposals. But yet, there is a little bit of an underlying malaise. First of all, because I have an extraordinary difficulty in being able to transpose the pictures to what the reality on the ground would be in North Amherst. Very, very difficult to understand what's going to happen in our neighborhood, very difficult to know what the configuration of buildings are going to be and the usages of what the building are going to be. But on the other hand, it also does not give me terribly much comfort when Mr. Cecil will tell this group that on something about which the charrette was thunderous in its unanimity, and that was the unwillingness to accommodate any more student housing in North Amherst. This was not just a sometime proposition of, or expression, whatever, of distaste or displeasure. We live in the neighborhood, you know, that's been given the designation of the Hobart-Hodown. We know exactly what the presence of hundreds, many hundreds and hundreds of student units presents for our neighborhood. We struggle, as a matter of fact, in North Amherst to consider ourselves a neighborhood, largely because we're so admixed and so deluded by the presence of something like student housing. And what disappoints me is that in looking to this new type of zoning, we cannot get any assurance from Mr. Cecil on the basis of what was, as I mentioned before, this thing in thunderous acclamation. And that was, the first thing that we agreed in the charrette, is that we wanted no more student housing. If this, if this form of planning cannot provide for this kind of an assurance, I mean, for heaven's sake, we just went through Gateway. And Gateway was profoundly instructive and, I think, profoundly gratifying, because the neighbors almost from the very outset identified the really compelling reasons why they did not want to share their neighborhood with certain kind of housing usages. I feel that we have very much the same kind of situation, and for good reason, over many, many years. And I'm wondering whether, if Mr. Ce-, if I'm understanding Mr. Cecil correctly, and that is to say, you cannot address this new form of planning to accommodate what the feeling of the citizens are with regard to a rather undesirable proliferation of student housing, then this may be one of the reasons for critically examining, if not actually opposing, this new kind of planning.
Mr. Tucker?
I want to say that we have, from the beginning, actually before this process got started, before the Gateway process got started, understood, the town has understood, the concern about the impacts of less-than-well-regulated student housing. What Mr. Cecil is saying that, is that zoning, which is all that is being presented tonight, this is not a full presentation of every town effort that is going to be aimed at North Amherst. Zoning cannot be used to exclude students, period. That's, it's illegal to do so. The town, however, has a wide range of other tools in its tool belt, and it is working on developing all of them. And I think that perhaps at the next full stop, the next time we have a presentation of this, we will try to put together a summary of not only what efforts the town is undergoing at the moment, but where we are in those efforts, so that you understand that this is not occurring in isolation. And that this does not, that the success of this or the failure of this does not have any effect whatsoever on what happens with student housing. Student housing in its various forms, or for that matter, other kinds of rental housing, and in some cases, home ownership housing, depends on who you're talking about, are, can be problematic, but they are addressed through other kinds of regulation. They are not addressed through zoning. There is, there are decades of court cases indicating you can't do that. So, I think it is unfair and just illogical to burden this effort with that, dealing with that issue in one way or another. That is not what this effort is for.
Thank you. All right. I'd like to thank all the folks from the Cecil Group for coming in here and giving us a presentation tonight, and thanks again for all your hard work on this project so far. We really look forward to working further with it and bringing it to Town Meeting this fall, so, thanks. To the folks in the audience, I ask you to keep in mind that we're done with this topic. We are continuing our meeting, and you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting if you'd like. If you are leaving, I ask that you take your conversations out into the hallway, because it becomes very difficult for us to hear and conduct business if people are congregating and talking in the back of the room. So, thanks again for coming out tonight. And again, I'll reiterate what Ms. Brastrow said earlier. Our next zoning Subcommittee meeting is next Wednesday, 5:00 PM in this room. We'll be meeting again on the following Wednesday. After that, also on 5:00 PM. So, you're welcome to join us, and please check out our materials on the website. Thank you. And with that, I will welcome my colleague at the center of the table and pass the metaphorical gavel down to him. Metaphorical? Actually, it's the physical. Literal. Yeah, for a while, I thought, actually, I was going to come here relatively early, but, oh, that dinner. At first, she only wanted the bottle. Then I managed to interest her in the applesauce, and she chugged the whole jar and went so well feeding herself. I thought, I'll hand her the yogurt. First couple of big spoonfuls went more or less into her mouth, and I turned away to attend to another thing and turned back, and, oh, man, she just started smearing the yogurt everywhere, and then she started massaging one of her feet with, oh. She's in bed now. Okay, old business. That was the report of the chair.
If I may.
Did we actually cover four A via all this, or?
We have an appearance scheduled.
Oh, we're still on three?
Yep. Yes.
I thought maybe you'd managed to mix that in with everything else. So, sorry, I didn't work with such a high degree of dispatch. I thought somehow you managed to integrate the Village Center rezoning into the, oh, well, or vice versa. All right, so, it's a mere 45 minutes behind schedule, and we are ready for Mr. John Cool? Has been waiting patiently, or at least waiting. All right, so, update us accordingly.
Is his microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Yes, as on as it gets.
Yeah, I'm John Cool, Chair of the Amherst Redevelopment Authority. And I believe you all have in front of you excerpts at least, and probably at some time have had access to the entire final report of the consultants on the Gateway project. The Redevelopment Authority has accepted this report and concluded that we, the authority, fully support the vision and the action steps outlined in that report, and intend to do all that we can as individuals and/or as the authority to promote the goals and objectives of the vision. We have determined that, on the basis of the report, we have no further statutory authority concerning the project. And you can imagine how frustrating it is to be an authority without any authority. And because we strongly wish the vision to remain a part of the public record and for the recommended action steps to receive the attention that they need and deserve, the authority has asked me to request that you adopt this vision statement and make it a part of the town's master plan.
Okay. Questions? Discussion? Concurrents?
You may wish to have a process for considering this question. Any amendment to the master plan should at a minimum have a public hearing, so that the public has an opportunity to comment on the advisability of any specific addition or other change to the master plan. There may be some other plans as well that are coming along that you might also want to consider. So, if you want this issue in general to be on our future agenda, we would put that on for you.
Quick question for John. Is this changed, even though we only had, like, pages five, six, whatever, from the original document that we had at the last meeting? That's much thicker.
No, it has not.
Just excerpts?
It's excerpts, so, provided by Mr. Tucker, assuming it was the relevant materials in the event that you did not have the full report with you. But there is no change from that.
There were a couple of small errors changed. There was an error in the map boundary that was changed, but the substance of the report is identical.
So, my question is, in what form would the ARA envision this being incorporated into the master plan? Do you see specific objectives and strategies based on the vision for Gateway being placed into the master plan? Or are you looking for the document as a whole to be incorporated by reference as an appendix of some sort? Or are you looking for specific new goals and objectives to be added to the plan in order to implement the Gateway vision?
Attempting not to be facetious, I would say, yes. But the, I think that the action steps that are suggested at the end of the report are the critical things to be noted by this board. And yet, I do imagine that the entire report would be incorporated by reference into the plan. And that is not to say that I have any expectation that this board has the excess resources to implement any and/or all of those action steps. It's just that I think that this board should have them in their, you know, uppermost in their thinking as they establish other priorities for zoning and so forth.
I was just going to say that it sounds like a good idea to have a public hearing about the idea of what portions of this or all of it to incorporate and in what way into the master plan.
So, I think this speaks to the need for a master plan implementation committee that can, you know, actually help us fill this in, because adopting it verbatim would be problematic, because the ARA has referenced, noticed, the ARA has referenced on the lead on some of the issues from which you no longer are the lead.
Is his microphone not working? Or no one's microphone is working?
Yep, you have to stay on the microphone.
Okay.
I own this mic.
I paid for it, I believe, this line. Boy, that's an obscure political reference.
But, some group to look at how the principles of- But some group to look at how the principles of, these principles are also very specific. I mean, they're much, I think arguably even more specific than the master plan is, master plan being more overarching goals. But I think of some group to look at how this could influence an update of the master plan, but then also how the principles of this could be implemented using the master plan, I think would be great goals.
I would use as examples of the, what shall we call them, the pre-master plan, community planning efforts that were done by the University of Massachusetts Landscape Architecture and Regional Planning Department, that were done by a variety of consultants in the process led up to the start of the actual master planning process itself, which are simply incorporated by reference in the document, period, entire. I think there is a general understanding that the master plan is the general statement of the community's intent rather than the specific statement and that the specifics are left to the bodies that are implementing them and only become a master plan issue if something arises. You should, I think, and we can make available to you, and you can get it online, look over the entire document and compare that to, you'll remember at the beginning of the summer, I was agitating for you to read your master plan and make it your own, make it your friend, that sort of thing. This is an instance where that is a useful exercise. Check it against the principles of the master plan. The easiest way to do that is under Chapter Two, Goals and Objectives, the key directions, is the first screen. Take a look at that and see if it makes sense. Then the next chapter is the land use chapter and it goes into much greater detail, but it has the same issues involved. This would probably be something that you would add by reference at the beginning of the land use chapter, which if you looked at the master plan, it would join a bunch of others there. But this is, again, the master plan so far is a, is a general policy guidance document. And what Steve was referring to earlier and which comes up later in the, in the agenda, there is a need for a master plan implementation committee to deal with some of the specifics. Your task is the plan as a whole, as a document that guides the community's policies in general. And that's what I encourage you to look at when we get to this on your, whatever agenda this comes up on.
Just following on to what Mr. Tucker said, I do think that, given that the authority spent over a year and thirty thousand dollars of its money to come up with this document, first of all, I think quite obviously it would be a shame to see that not come, bear some fruit in some way. But moreover, I think it's a well-done document and probably a good exercise in incorporating specifics into the general template that I think of, that I, that I consider the right, right description of the master plan itself. But thank you for your consideration and I'm pleased. I think a public meeting to consider is perfectly reasonable.
So, do you want to talk about scheduling, John? And should it first, oh, actually, first should we decide upon, we don't have a master plan implementation committee yet, do we? Or subcommittee yet?
Yeah.
Or do we? I can't remember.
We don't have it yet.
We don't have it yet. That's what we're doing later on today, right?
That's on the agenda as an item to discuss. I think my understanding of where that was last time was that the
Oh, MPIC, yes.
The board was considering making a recommendation to the select board that it go ahead and act on the creation of such a committee.
Oh, that would be a separate committee, not a subcommittee of us. Okay, I didn't remember that part. Okay. That's right, it is MPIC, not MPI-S. Should we wait then to schedule any formal hearing on this until such a committee is created by the select board?
I don't know that, I mean, I don't know that, that a master plan implementation committee would have whether, the question of whether or not a specific community planning result should go on the master plan or not as part of its task. Their, their task is to take the plan, which the planning board is responsible for creating and carrying forward in this way, keeping it updated, and then seeing if the parts of that plan are being implemented in a timely fashion and looking for ways to, in much the same way that the town meeting coordinating committee tries to assist town meeting in doing its job, the master plan implementation committee would be helping the town do its job in terms of implementing the master plan.
Sure. Okay, that makes sense. Okay, so then, should we talk scheduling?
I might recommend, and I don't know how Mr. Cool thinks about this, but given that we're in the, as was pointed out to us pointedly earlier on, we are in the run-up to town meeting, you might want to wait until after town meeting to have this as an agenda item so that it's not a distraction from your other work and so that this can be examined without other distractions, if that makes any sense.
When are we likely to have the first evening of town meeting that considers zoning?
I don't know what is going to happen with the warrant, how it's going to be arranged. The fall warrant is often regulation amendment heavy. Sometimes they put those things at the front, sometimes they don't. That's going to be up to the select board. But November seventh is the first date and I believe it's just Mondays and Wednesdays thereafter till they're done. So by the, by the mid, probably after Thanksgiving, around the time of the zoning forum, would be a, the first planning board meeting is December seventh in December. And that would be a reasonable time, too.
Okay.
It's out of that.
The only other thing I'll point out is that Mr. Cool asked us really for two separate things, one of which was for the board to adopt or endorse the plan, just as a sort of statement of support, and the other was incorporated into the master plan. So I'm wondering whether
Well, aren't we doing that one and the same on December seventh?
Yeah, well, so if we might want to separate them, we could do the former probably more expeditiously than the latter.
Well, I don't think we'd, we'd be scheduling it if we didn't generally approve of it, right? We haven't really said much about it, but I took that to mean that people were generally okay with it. Or am I misinterpreting the silence?
No, I would like some time to review it.
Okay. So, do we want to discuss it again amongst ourselves before we have the hearing on December seventh, or?
Not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay. Just hold off until then? Keep you in suspense as to what we really think. Three months, I hope you can take it. We're a quiet group right now, I guess. Everyone's just imagining the yogurt scene with Michaela? No. Okay. All right, well, thanks for your patience.
Thank you very much.
And I guess we'll have to wait another three months before we discuss it in greater detail.
I don't have to sit here for the whole time.
No, you can finally go home now.
Good evening.
Okay. So, we were just talking about master plan implementation. Zoning, next steps, and the MPIC. First, are we, is that already on the agenda for the select board, the creation of the MPIC? So, that's something we want to suggest to them, or what, how exactly do we go about that? You ask your wife. No.
So, this is just my thought, is that since they would be the appointing authority for any committee, but it's a committee that we care a lot about, obviously, is that
We're trying to stack it. No.
We decide amongst ourselves what we think the committee's responsibility and charge would be or should be, and perhaps the composition in terms of the structure, not the individuals, and make a recommendation to the select board and ask them to carry that out.
Okay.
So, so I guess my own thoughts on the committee's structure is that it probably should be composed of a couple of representative seats, like presumably one or possibly more from this body, presumably one from the select board, maybe other town bodies, although I'm not sure about that, along with several or a couple people appointed sort of at-large. And that kind of mirrors the structure of the comprehensive planning committee that created the master plan in the first place, although I wouldn't suggest that we go to the extremes of size that the CDC got to. But if we had a couple of dedicated seats from specific boards along with a few at-large people, that would seem to me to be a reasonable structure.
So, given that implementation has a lot to do with zoning, should someone from the ZBA be on it?
Yeah, that's a good point.
And so what other, so I mean, potentially one ZBA, one select board, two planning board, what, I'm trying, there must be some other relevant bodies, but who would that be?
The other major pieces of what the town does, aside from public, general public interests, are you need to be able to pay for it and you need, in many cases, there will be physical changes or capital changes involved. So, finance committee, perhaps someone who is both on the finance committee and the joint capital planning committee, maybe someone from the public works committee or the public transportation and bicycle committee, someone who's familiar with the physical
Sure.
Aspects of this. What you can do is take the principal categories under the, under the master plan, land use, economic development, who represents that? Housing?
What about agriculture?
That comes under, comes under natural resources and
Yeah, conservation.
Yeah, somewhere, something like that.
The only thing I would suggest is that we be wary of sort of scope creep. So if we have a dozen different interested, you know, the, the master plan impacts everything that we do in town and so if every single committee is sending someone
Represented from every single committee and board.
So, so
It's a fifty-member body, right there.
Yes. I, I would suggest like seven people is the reasonable size for a, a working committee. But even if we don't have named representatives from a given board, like Ag, for example, the idea that you've got people who are at-large gives people the opportunity who are interested in agriculture or public works or whatever aspect of it to have a seat at the table, too.
I don't know if we're taking public comments, but somebody had a hand on.
Oh, yeah, just
Before Jonathan said that, I was pointing to
You should probably come forward to the microphone. I know it's
Oh, sure.
Not a formal comment, but just so people can hear in, say who you are, too.
Yeah, all I would, Janet Keller. I was going to say before Jonathan suggested the open space and recreation interest. I think there, with all due respect, there are some things that are very integral that to be implemented throughout, throughout the plan and that's one that strikes me that's terribly important, as is the transportation. And, you know, so I hope you will include that, that sort of thing, go down that list as Jonathan suggested. Not make the committee too big, but think about what are some of the really important pieces that should inform the implementation. Thanks.
Thanks. So, where do we want to leave this? How do we exactly make this request to the select board?
Should you talk about the chair perhaps writing a letter to the select board describing what this committee would be like and how many members and who might be represented?
I, I think that's a good idea. I think we're not quite at the point that we have hashed out what our thoughts are on that. I mean, we might be able to do that tonight if we have agreement.
Before we start suggesting a membership, we should suggest a, a charge.
You know, I just have the members appointed and then let them figure out what to do. That's one approach, right?
There's essentially a charge in the master plan that just describes what impick, for lack of a better sound, would do.
I have a question, since I haven't committed to the master plan in memory quite yet. Is there an implementation order of magnitude in the plan as far as priorities or importance?
Yeah, the, the plan does incorporate a set of priority implementation steps, or priority implementation strategies, I'm not quite sure what they're called. But the, the plan itself consists of hundreds of individual strategies, but the plan also singles out a subset of those, maybe twenty or so, as being viewed as, at that point in time, as critical or most productive to move forward on those first relative to some of the other ones.
Our charge could be taking those twenty or ten points if they could, or the top ten of the twenty and saying that that would be, you know, a suggestion, a charge is to, you know, you can't bite off, you know, master plans implementing take years. You know, it's conceived of as a, you know, short-term, long-term, midterm plan. You might just, the information's probably right there, just to, you know, have the stereotyped page to write the letter, so to speak. But if the plan is already determined, the priorities and whatnot, the logical, then the appointees, in my opinion, would follow the logic of the topics to be implemented. It might not be, some of the topics we mentioned, representatives might come a little later rather than sooner to help keep the scope creep down. And the added scope creep, I wanted to mention, maybe someone
From the, oh, here she comes. Sorry. The, someone, I don't know, it was before my time on the board, but the master planning committee itself might be an at-large person or someone like, who's had the continuity of the plan for, if they're, if they're still alive, because I know they worked a long time. Always my first night on the board is when they were all applauding and drinking,
as I recall.
That was afterwards.
There's a ghost from that process hovering in the back of the room. I'll go out on a limb and volunteer to write up something resembling a charge if folks think that's a good idea and maybe bring it back to our next meeting. So we can take a look at it then and maybe talk about, as Rob said, think about the charge and then think who would be best served to carry out that charge. Is that okay?
Sounds good.
I, I just had one thought about that, that I, I mean, implementing the master plan is more or less a, I see it as a holistic process throughout town government. And I think that one of the more useful things that such a committee could do would be to basically read and look at the agendas for all the other committees in town, discuss what's on those and see if there's anything on which the master plan could conceivably weigh in. And then advise those, send and representative advise that committee on how the master plan might be implemented in that particular agenda item. That was my suggestion.
Okay. All right, we'll settle that then. Any other old business topics that we're not?
Well, we talked, the master plan implementation, number one, zoning. We meant, we talked about this very briefly at the previous zoning subcommittee meeting, not, not the one that was held this afternoon, but the previous one, for about, I don't know, eight seconds because there were so many other items. But one of the things that's coming up fairly quickly is the need to ask for appropriations for funding to do the next step in, in zoning consultant, consulting in terms of village centers and so forth. The town manager was specifically interested in having some funds on the warrant for the fall town meeting to underwrite a form-based zoning process, much as we are undergoing now for North Amherst and Atkins Corners, for the gateway. And staff is going to recommend for your consideration that that might also include the downtown overall, that the, basically from the UMass campus down to Route Nine. from the UMass campus down to Route Nine, that this ought to be planned as, planned and zoned as, as an entirety and a single unit rather than distinct bits and pieces. And also introduce, so that's one thing, that there's a, a funding request that is likely to show up on the town meeting warrant from the, the town manager for that purpose, and you should have the opportunity to weigh in on that. And then I think the next question is going to be, then what? And I don't think the zoning subcommittee has had a chance yet to talk about that. The gateway process is already underway, but we have any number of other village centers, and which ones come next? And how does the, how does the planning board want to approach that? I think it would probably be, I'm telling you about that now, but I think it would probably be better if the zoning subcommittee chewed on that for a bit and then came back to you with whatever they decide to come up with.
Do you, do you think that it will be necessary or advisable to go through the same process that we went through with North and South Amherst for each one of these items? In other words, a consultant and a visioning process? Or is it possible that for some of these, we might be able to just apply language that we, that, assuming we adopt any language?
I, I think that we would begin to be after a bit, maybe after the next one, we would begin to be able to take the results of the public participation process and visioning process and turn that into language based on the format that we have in, in front of us for this evening's presentation, such that the consultants wouldn't have to be writing the language. I think the staff would be able to, to do more of that as we go along. I think the visioning process, I think it's very useful to have someone who is not board members or staff members conducting that, conducting that process. It just seems to work better, they're not freighted with whatever political baggage staff and board members have or don't have, and they, the community and neighbors and so forth have, feel like they have a better access to the process as a result. So I, I would continue to recommend that model for at least the visioning process and the public, the initial public participation process. The crafting of the zoning, once we've got the format, presuming we can get this adopted either this fall or possibly next spring if we have to, then we can take that format and run with it.
Yep.
I would say, in response to what Rob was recommending, that it's likely that the second time around, this is going to be a lot simpler. I mean, the visioning process will probably be the same, but writing the document is going to be much simpler now that we have a template, so it'll be less expensive.
And that was the intent. The intent of doing this was to create a template.
All set? No, oh, oh, sorry. Wasn't looking at the audience.
Still Janet Keller. But I don't know if it's appropriate to ask this of you, but as was noted, there was one big piece of the North Amherst Village Center process that couldn't be addressed through the form-based rezoning proposal, and that was transportation. The, the vision was for greatly strengthening the core, having less density outside the core, and making big improvements to the five-way intersection. And people really wanted that. So I'm wondering if it's appropriate for this body in some way to convey to whomever is the right people that we need a transportation study and to get going on doing that. We're terribly afraid that the rezoning goes forward, and we still got the same lousy intersection that doesn't work well, and now misfits another set of developments, so that would be wonderful if that could occur. Thanks.
Thank you. As, as the members are aware, there is a transportation plan task force being formed to do a transportation plan for the entire community, and it would include that, and even if it didn't, town, part of the result, part of the product we're going to be getting from the consultants is a list of the other issues that were identified as part of the process, quite aside from zoning. And certainly those intersections are not only on our minds now, they've been on our minds for a long time. In some ways, this is sort of the excuse to, to start organizing. We are in the process of putting together a grant application for, for instance, for sewer and water funds from the state to do capacity improvements in a village center, and at least a portion of the village center would be, those streets would have to be repaved and redone as part of that. So there are the beginnings of a number of moving parts on this, and we're not unaware of that.
Ready to move on then? Any other old business that was not reasonably anticipated forty-eight hours prior to the meeting? Nope. Okay, on to new business, planning board reorganization, election of officers, subcommittees, and liaisons to other committees. Anyone plotting a coup to take over? Yep?
So I do think that it's healthy to keep the gavel moving in a committee, and, and largely out of fear that it lands on my desk, because I'm the vice chair and I don't really want it to land there. I would actually like to nominate David Weber as chair, if he might be interested in serving.
I'd be honored to serve.
I'll second that.
I'd make a motion to accept that nomination.
You mean, vote? Who holds the vote now?
No. Do we have a second?
A second to motion.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? You vote for yourself.
Oh, you want to be a judge.
Can I also follow up, can I also follow up by thanking Mr. Schaffetz for his service, which has been exemplary?
Does this mean I get to resign from the board now?
No. How are we going to hear, hear about Michaela as back to
Ah, you can just call her up and she'll tell you. Her vocabulary is a little bit limited, but you get the idea so far. Do you want to continue as, as vice chair?
I would be willing to. I'd also be willing to turn it over to anybody else who might be interested.
Sure, I'll second that.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? And Bruce, do you want to continue on as clerk?
I'm willing to serve unless somebody else would like to.
Okay.
By acclamation?
No one calling about Michaela. So that's why I have it on vibrate in case the babysitter calls. Oh, I'm sorry, was there a second?
Who nominated?
We haven't, we haven't had a motion yet.
Oh, I moved to nominate Bruce as clerk.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Okay. Subcommittees.
I'd like to request being relieved from zoning subcommittee, and happy to relinquish that seat to anyone who's interested. The transportation task force is about to get underway, and with my work schedule and that, I don't, I don't feel I can provide adequate attention to zoning subcommittee matters.
I don't think you really need to request it. Does anyone want to take the now empty seat?
I don't want to take the seat, but I just wanted to point out that in the past, there have been three members of the zoning subcommittee, and Rob offered to be a fourth member last year, so if you wanted to, you could go back to having three members.
It seems fine. How, how does that affect having enough people for votes though if one of us is absent? Is that
Two, two members as a quorum.
Okay.
It, it actually makes it a little bit easier to have two members be your quorum instead of three, but, but historically, we have been an inclusive subcommittee, so we welcome anybody who might want to join us in a meeting for five hours every Wednesday night.
The, the meetings are advertised
It's a big draw, isn't it?
The subcommittee meetings are advertised as meetings of the planning board and the zoning subcommittee, so that if a quorum of the members of the planning board show up, it, it is a legitimate planning board meeting, it doesn't change its character. Thank you.
Okay.
Allow staff to voice its deep appreciation for Mr. Rosnoy's service on the zoning subcommittee. He's been a significant contributor to the work.
PVPC, would you like to continue on?
I'd be willing and able to serve, and I'm also willing and able to step aside if somebody else would like to serve in that position, such as the chair-elect.
If I were to serve on the PVPC, I'd be willing to do that, but I'd have to give up Ag and ARA to do it.
That sounds like a no.
Would you like to give your PVPC report while we're at it?
There, there is no PVPC report, that's how
Okay.
Excuse me. Do they need to vote to keep Stephen?
We need to vote to renew the status quo.
Can't hurt.
Want to vote?
I nominate Stephen to be our PVPC rep.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? CPAC.
I'd be willing to serve again, I enjoyed it, thought it was a good committee.
Okay.
Although the chairmanship is changing this year, interesting, it would be interesting.
I did get a memo from the select board's office saying that since Sandra was recently reappointed as a planning board member, that you do need to vote to have her be your representative on CPAC.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll move, so I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? And do you have a CPAC report for us?
At the first meeting of the fall will be September fifteenth, that's my report, seven o'clock.
David, are you willing to, it sounded like you wanted to continue on at Ag and ARA?
Well, yes and no. The problem with being on the ARA is that they have their meetings at five o'clock, and I very often cannot make them. And I've made about half of them, I think, not out of shirking my duties, but out of the fact that I just can't get there from Springfield for a five o'clock meeting. So it's a, it's a, not the best fit for me.
I should let you know I don't have any assignments, and I'd be willing to take the ARA representation if the board wanted me to do that.
Okay. So first, do we have a motion regarding David and agriculture?
I'll move.
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor? And do you have a report for us?
I do.
Okay.
The Ed Commission met way back on August ninth, and they reviewed the right to farm bylaw and flyer, there were some revisions. There, I'm just going to read my notes. There was a discussion of town-owned lands, especially as agricultural licensing by the Conservation Commission, which is taking place on some town-owned lands now. As implementation of the master plan and possible formation of a committee, is there a current inventory of town-owned lands suitable for agriculture? That was their question. And the rest of the discussion concerned farmers' markets.
I want to make sure this isn't Michaela. Definitely not regarding Michaela. Phew, sorry, just getting nervous having her there. That's why I'm watching her. Okay, do we have a motion regarding Connie and the ARA?
Sorry, go ahead.
I move to appoint Connie as our liaison to the ARA.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, all in favor? And David, this will be your last opportunity to give an ARA report.
I have no report, except that the next meeting is tomorrow night at five o'clock.
Okay.
Surprise.
Have any plans? Now you do.
Maybe, David, I could at some point email you or something and try to see if there's any, anything you want to pass on to me.
Sure, absolutely.
Okay, public transportation and bicycle committee.
That's, this is actually not an official liaison appointment, it says a charge made by motion of this board that somebody go to the, that committee to help develop a townwide transportation plan.
True, but we can renew that charge.
I, I don't think it's necessary, but I don't know.
The, I have the impression it's still in effect.
What's, what's happening now is the, the work that that individual is tasked to do has succeeded, and the select board is in the process of assigning a transportation plan task force to do that work. I presume that there would be communication back and forth between the task force and the public work, public transportation and, and bicycle committee, and I don't know whether that should be the planning board representative or what.
Well, I, isn't there going to be a representative from that committee on that task force?
I presume there would be, yeah.
Yeah, so that's where that communication would be. So I don't actually see that it's necessary to
Yeah.
Have a planning board member
Okay.
Reporting or communicating with the public transportation committee.
Sure, but I'm sorry, but, but do we need, do we need to have a representative to the transportation plant task force in that case? Or do we have to wait until
Well, you do, you do. We have two members from this board who, who've been, Sandra and I have been, this, this board nominated Sandra and me to be on that task force.
So do we need to renew that?
Right, managing planning implementation part of the parking and transportation.
Right, right.
That's right.
That was, that was just recently done, and it's, it's now with the town manager.
Yeah, I don't think you need to renew that.
Ah, okay. Good.
So are we saying that we are not going to have, or that we're just not going to be on the public transportation and bicycle committee, or we're not going to have a slot? I was, I'm sure I understood that correct.
There's
Yes, that's right.
There's currently not a planning board member on, there was a, an informal liaison created by vote of this committee to try and convince them to do a thing, and they were convinced to convince the town to do that thing, and now we have a task force being formed to do that thing. So that makes sense.
What's your, um?
Okay, so that's it for a Mass Works grant request, I'm sorry, still more.
Ask you one more thing. You did have a representative on the design review board, and according to the zoning bylaw, you're supposed to have a representative on the design review board, and it can either be a member of the planning board or it can be someone else. So the person who was your representative, Catherine Grandonico, resigned from the design review board recently. She's got an overabundance of work.
When did she resign?
I think it was in the spring. So she wrote her letter to the town manager, I think, or the select board, I don't know which ever one is her appointing authority, but anyway, now you have an opportunity to have a representative on the DRB, and it could be one of your members, or it could be someone that you, you know, know about who's out in the community. Anyway, this, I'm just bringing this up for the first time tonight, so maybe this isn't the best time to talk about it, but you could be thinking about it, and I'll put it on the agenda for next week, or next, not next week, the next meeting, and, you know, maybe you can talk about it then.
Now, a while back, she gave an interesting presentation about her work on it and who she was, but how is she But how was she originally appointed? She didn't have anything to do with the Planning Board originally, or did she?
Originally, she was appointed by the Appointing Authority, which is, I believe, the Select Board. Is that correct?
Yes, but the process was that she had volunteered to be, and she was about the third person, to be the Planning Board's representative to the DRB in the stead of having a Planning Board member be a member of the Design Review Board. So that we have now for several terms of Planning Board representatives had people who were appointed with the recommendation of the Planning Board by the Select Board to the Design Review Board and those people come back and report to the Planning Board on what's going on on the Design Review Board. Too many boards in there in that sentence, but anyway.
So anyway, just one more thing. The Design Review Board is a five-member board and so there is one vacancy. So I'm sure that the Select Board is looking for someone to fill that vacancy. If you would like to recommend someone, you may do so. Otherwise, the Select Board will find someone and then you can choose among those people to be your representative or you could choose to have one of you be the representative.
I just have a question, structural question then. If one of us were the representative, because they give us reports that we can choose to adopt or not adopt, does it become sort of a funky conflict of interest or how does?
No, the Design Review Board's function is advisory under the by law. They have no permitting authority. They're part of the permit process and they make recommendations to permitting bodies, but they are not permitting, they're not a decision-making body themselves. So that's been enough of a buffer. However, that has also been one of the reasons why it has been useful to have people who are not members of the Planning Board representing the Planning Board on the DRB. So there could be an arm's length.
I would like to have the opportunity to have a couple of weeks to get a pool of people that we can nominate.
Sure.
Okay. Next up, Mass Works Grant Request for Support Letter.
Yes, I had mentioned this earlier in the meeting in response to questions about dealing with traffic in North Amherst. And this has been on the town's list of things it needs to do for some time. It is specifically to create a larger capacity connection between the Cushman Water Treatment Plant and North Amherst Village Center. And then once in North Amherst Village Center, it would involve the expansion of the capacity of both sewer system and the water system in the center in selected areas. It's not going to redo the entire thing. In the process, it will entail tearing up and then recreating substantial sections of Pine Street. This will cause some disruption, but it will also be a source of great gratitude on the part of people who have to try and travel on Pine Street at the moment, which is a hazard. So we're applying for funds to the state. The Mass Works program is the new program under which they are collapsing any number of the Economic Development Infrastructure Grant Programs, Pwed, CDAG. We don't have to go into the sources of those acronyms, but they serve slightly different purposes in terms of funding capital projects at the local level that support economic development of different kinds. This one happens to be directed at Pwed, but it is a Mass Works grant overall. In the process, the state has shrunk the pool of available money, which they needed to do. So it will be more competitive. I do not have before me yet the specifics from our Public Works folks who are developing the specifics of the project in terms of the number of millions of dollars, the number of linear feet of pipe replaced and so forth. But I think my earlier description is reasonably accurate in terms of what is going to be done. We are approaching a deadline. I think the.
The 16th of September.
Yeah, the 16th of September is when the grant needs to be in. It would be useful to have a support letter from the Planning Board, which is in the process of trying to create new zoning, in part for the purpose of revitalizing that center, supporting this grant to upgrade the infrastructure for that same purpose. So I guess we would ask that the Board as a body authorize the new chair to sign, to compose and sign a letter of support in a timely fashion so that we can get that out with the grant application.
I strongly support anything that would expedite the tearing up of the few remaining scraps of pavement on Pine Street. And so I will move that the Board endorsed a letter in support of this project.
I'll second that. But in so doing, to open discussion, I have a question. Is this officially, I'm looking at page two of the frequently asked questions under Mass Works, and it says, "What types of activities does it support?" The second bullet is transportation improvements. Is this what you're basically looking at here, Jonathan?
No, we are looking at community revitalization and sustainable development. Isn't for that is that that is the most general category that requires the least specificity in terms of, you know, how many jobs are you going to create from this? Because we don't have private projects yet. Part of the purpose of this is to enable the private projects to occur, to which we could attach such figures.
Because as you can see, small rural communities are limited to population of 7,000 or less. Or certain projects are limited to those. But that's not this.
Right, no, we are applying under the community revitalization and sustainable development category.
Have a question. I now own this microphone. We had talked earlier about the, if the water and sewer project, was it sewer or was it just increasing the size of the pipe from the reservoir or from the pumping station to the center of North Amherst? Would this grant also include just general infrastructure at the five-way intersection, the amazing intersection?
That's actually not the amazing intersection. The amazing intersection is the one immediately north of that. But we are not, as part of this, making major transportation improvements. We would be repaving and in some cases, having to relocate and reconfigure sidewalks and so forth. For instance, those of you familiar with Pine Street, in the vicinity of its intersection with State Street, which comes up the hill and joins it there, immediately west of that, going toward the Village Center, the road is here and then two inches above it is this little tiny curb and there's three and a half feet of sidewalk. And then you've got a drop-off. The road's going to be moved around in the process of doing this so that you can have what would be considered a real sidewalk that people could safely travel there. So yes, there will be some improvements. They're not going to be quite up to this yet. This is a separate, the street types, level of improvement, streetscape work and so forth is a whole other.
But it's not contradictory to that?
No, no. And it would, in any event, in all events, be an improvement over what's there.
Anything would.
It would be almost impossible not to have it be an improvement over what's there.
Thank you.
Part of that street is referenced in this report that we got from the CSO Group about street types.
Yes.
And so I would hope that even if that doesn't get, even if town meeting does not pass that, it's still something that, you know, we want, the vision that we want for that area. I think. And so I hope that that is communicated to Guilford and whoever's looking at that street.
It will be. I think you would find that our Public Works Department already has, both in their heads and in their practice, a very substantially responsible template for how they redo roads. Again, what we're going to be able to do under this grant would not be up to the level of what we're talking about in the Form Base Code. This would be a shorter term.
Would it be wide enough to, I mean, would it be wide enough to include bike lanes on both sides? Right now, it's downright dangerous to buzz it a little bit.
It might. I won't make promises because, partly because the, part of the challenge in North Amherst as opposed to Atkins Corners, when you're talking about Form Base Code, is the narrow width of the right-ofways there. You have, you know, Sunderland Road in some places, although it looks wider because the buildings aren't up to the street, is only like 45 feet wide. And there would have to be, as part of those improvements, some acquisition of additional right-ofway in order to even fit in what we're talking about in here. So the whole question of how do we redesign the streets in North Amherst Village is a separate question from this. What we're, it would be lovely to lever those changes with this and we'll get as much as we can. But the principal intent here is to deal with the water coming from Cushman to North Amherst Center and then also, once we're in North Amherst Center, deal with the water and the sewer capacity. That's the role of these funds.
I'd be happy to write the letter. Can I suggest that the road be paved with good intentions?
We do that in Amherst by reflex. We don't put up the road signs saying where we're going, though, in the process. Do you, would it be useful to vote to authorize the chair to do that?
Yeah, we have a motion and second.
Sure.
Oh, they did have a motion and second, yes, that's right. So they just need to vote.
Called a question.
Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion? Oh, I'm sorry.
I was getting set to vote.
Oh, any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Thank you.
I welcome input from anyone on this letter.
Okay, Planning Commissioners Journal included in your packets. Any new business that was not reasonably anticipated 48 hours prior to the meeting? Nope. What do we have for applications then?
You have a Form A application that is, oh gosh. It is for the land on Research Drive, part of which was developed by New England Environmental into a LEED-certified building and the other half of it is proposed to be developed for a doctor's office. That parcel of land is currently all one and you will be seeing an A&R plan for that on the 21st of September for your signature to divide that parcel into two parcels. Upcoming ZBA applications, I think I may have talked to you about some of these. Let's see. Lincoln Avenue, transfer of ownership of a two-family dwelling. There's a special permit on that and one of the conditions is that if the property is transferred, they need to come back and get another special permit. So that's basically the same use that is continuing. Then Cherry Hill Development wants to, this is the Pulpit Hill Cohousing, wants to remove one of the conditions of its special permit to allow renting of existing units. So again, there's really not going to be much of a physical change. It's just a change in the condition. And those are the only two new ZBA applications. We do not have any new Planning Board applications, although, as I said before, we're always talking to people and so we expect to see something soon. So that's that.
Okidok. I think that's it. Oh, actually, I did have, I'll do my final report of the chair on something not directly related, but sort of interesting. I'm the Eastern Vice President for the National Association of Forensic Economics, which is basically economists who testify as expert witnesses in court cases. And I attended our first standalone board meeting as opposed to board meetings that we have in conjunction with regional conferences. And it was interesting, the way they set it up over the weekend is Saturday was going through, am I being cut off? You're anticipating I'm going to finish up soon. Saturday was just going through all the different discussion topics and formulating motions. And then Sunday morning was set aside to do all the voting. And I said, "This is really strange. Why do we, you know, leave it off just at the moment we're about to actually vote and decide on something?" And the answer was, and I found this, it's not quite directly applicable to us because we usually have two weeks until the next meeting, in which case we're going to forget what it was all about by then. But he said the purpose was, it's so hard sometimes to just formulate the motion and it has to be conveyed verbally. So instead, the next morning, everything has been written out overnight and it's all there for people to see. And it's not written in stone. The motions can still be modified, but it helps to think about it a little bit, basically overnight, and then see everything written down. So I realize it doesn't really work for us because it's too long a gap as opposed to overnight, unless, of course, we want to have a Thursday morning meeting. But still, I just found it interesting how that format works. Whether it can ever be applied, you know, maybe if we have a meeting, you know, a week later, unusual, but sometimes happens and, you know, people want more time to think about it. It's just an interesting alternative to our immediate voting after discussion.
This is Thursday morning, isn't it?
Unconstitutional or something? No.
No, I have a practical item.
Oh. That wasn't practical?
The minutes are available for signature by whomever whichever chairperson would like to sign them. Jonathan O'Keefe took the vote.
Sure, why doesn't he do it then?
And Jonathan Schefs is the chair, or was the chair. So anyway, who wants to sign the minutes?
I'll sign them because I'm closest to you.
Could I note that, excuse me, that I will not be here for the next meeting, which is on September 21st? Will be absent.
And where exactly?
I didn't say where I'd be. I just said I wouldn't be here.
Actually, I will be absent that evening also.
There you are.
Probably.
Probably not in the same place.
We still have seven.
Okay, good, yeah, this is. A full board.
May I just say again, thank you to Jonathan Schefs. And you're going to be a tough act to follow.
Better for us. A pleasure to serve and a pleasure to be relieved also.